I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A rule call?
Mayor Hasler?
Here.
Alderman Grimminger?
Here.
Alderman Mooney?
Here.
Alderman Donovan?
Here.
Alderman Jokers?
Here.
Alderman Hook?
Here.
Alderman Stupi?
Here.
Alderman Prentz?
Here.
Alderman Rezik.
Here.
May we have a forum?
Thank you very much. I'll have a chance to look at the agenda. Your approval.
Second.
On your favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have no presentations or awards tonight, so we're going to have personal appearances. Kristy Clark, the SRO officer with St. Genevieve Artuels District will like to address the mayor and the board concerning the request to pass a city ordinance regarding school attendance. Please come up to the podium.
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Julie Fleeg. I'm the Assistant Superintendent at St. Genevieve. One of my many duties is to oversee discipline, which attendance violations fall under discipline. We're here tonight to discuss and ask for your support on a city ordinance in regards to attendance and those students who miss a large amount of days of school. There is a misconception out there that this is, and we heard it from, I saw it on Facebook, that this is for those kids who miss a day of school and don't come to school. This is not for kids who miss just a few days. This, what we're talking about, is for kids who miss many, many days. And we've taken many steps and contacted all the appropriate agencies, and we're still not seeing the child come to school, and the child is still missing a lot of school. I am going to turn it over to SRO Clark and let Officer Clark kind of run through some information she has on what other cities around us are doing. And then we do have our assistant principals here from St. John Elementary, St. Genevieve Middle School, and St. Genevieve High School, and we can have them give you some examples of what we're talking about. That way you might, you can get an understanding of how many days we're really talking that some of our students are missing. Okay?
Okay. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I guess first of all, I just kind of want to talk about what the attendant, it's called the compulsory attendance law, the state statute says. And I have a copy of it up here if any of you want to see it. Basically, it, there's a lot of information in here, but the information states in here that a parent or guardian is responsible for a child's education between the ages of seven and 17 years old. It also states further in here that if a child is five years or older enrolled in our school district, the parent is responsible for their education and to maintain, maintain attendance. So basically what our, our policy states is this year, it's kind of changed a little bit. So at our high school level, a kiddo can miss up to six days a semester, and then it starts back over second semester. At our middle school level, it's eight, and at our elementary level, it's 10. And again, those start over on second semester. So like Dr. Fleeg said, this, we're not asking for the city ordinance to be passed for kids that are missing one, two, three days of school. But I guess what the procedure is, is in our policy, it states that we are to send out letters to the parents stating that their child has missed X amount of days. So we're giving them notification that they've missed this many days. And the letter can include what the penalties may be academically. This year, the policy changed for middle school and high school level where they start missing a certain amount of percentage points. And the assistant principals can explain that better because I don't deal with the grade reductions and that. But, so the letters are sent out. That's just one way that we notify the parents that their kids are missing X amount of days of school. There will be phone calls home to the parents. So if parents haven't called in to say, "My kid's sick," or "My kid's out of town," then the secretaries or whoever they designate will call home to see why the child is not in school. So we do do those phone calls and document that. You know, that just kind of goes on. And when they start getting to that six, eight, and 10, is usually like when the assistant principals will notify me and say, "Hey, this kid has hit, you know, six already. We have, you know, four more months left in this semester." Or they've hit eight, or whatever the case may be. And just kind of give me a heads up. So at that point, like I said, there's been like phone calls, there's been letters, and usually the assistant principals will meet with the student themselves and say, "Hey, you know, what's going on? Why are you not here at school?" And that's usually done without me. So then when they contact me, what I will do is I will make a phone call to the parents and say, you know, "Hey, this is what our policy states. Can you tell me why is your child missing, you know, this many days of school?" And we just discuss it, whether it's, you know, medical, or the kid's refusing to come. You know, we have situations like that, and I let the parents know, you know, "If your child's refusing to come to school, pick up the phone and call me because it's going to be considered a truancy issue." And I can come out to the house and, you know, pick the child up and bring them to school. If it continues, where the child continues to miss school, then I can make a juvenile office referral on that child. But again, that's absolutely a last resort that we want to look at. So I'll just kind of have a conversation with the parents on the phone as to what's going on, and this is what it looks like. And so after that, if it continues, then, and at that point, the assistant principal and I are usually in constant communication, and I'll relate to them how our conversation went and what their explanations are for the child missing so much school. From there, then we'll keep an eye on their attendance. And if they continue to miss, we may call them in, the parents in, or the guardian in, and say, "Hey, let's have a meeting. We all need to sit down. We need to discuss what's going on here in the seriousness of your child's education." So we call in the parents or the guardian, and we sit down, and again, I say "we," it's usually myself and the assistant principal, sometimes the principal too. Sometimes we have the child come in, depending on the situation. And we'll sit down and talk about what's going on. And during, usually during that meeting is when I give the parents a copy of the Missouri State Statute, which basically states that, you know, what I had said earlier, they're responsible for their education, or some form of education, I should say. And then I give them a copy of what their penalties could be if, you know, they, they don't meet the criteria as far as, or they don't, they're failing to send their kids to school, I guess I should say. So then I also give them a copy of the attendance policy, depending on what grade level they're at. So they also have a copy of that, which they've already had access to that earlier in the school year, but I like to go ahead and give them one so they can't say that they didn't ever see a copy of it. So that's kind of the paperwork that I give them, and then we just have a discussion and say, and I mean, I'm pretty honest with them, and say, you know, "If, if your child continues to miss school, then there's a chance that my next stop, excuse me, next step may be that I contact the child abuse neglect hotline." So then again, after the meeting, we keep an eye on their attendance, and if they are, they are missing still, and, and when, again, I'm not talking three or four days, I'm talking up to eight, nine, 10, 12, 20 days, you know, a semester, then I am going to go ahead and hotline, and at that point, for educational neglect on the parents or the guardian. And that's when Children's Division will go out and they will conduct an investigation to determine, you know, what they need to do as far as offering the family services or what we can all do to work together. So I'll keep in communication with the Children's Division to see where they're at on their investigation. And then if they still continue to miss, even after the Children's Divisions made contact with the family or offered services or whatnot, and the child's still missing, and when I say "still missing," we do take medical definitely into consideration. But if we have kids who are, parents are never calling in, or, you know, that we have all these unexcused absences, that's really where we're getting concerned. So then at that point, if the kid's still missing, then that's where, up until this point, I have been go, I've been writing up a report for the compulsory attendance law, and I have been sending it down to the prosecuting attorney, charging the parents with failing to send their kids to school. And then basically at that point, the prosecutor looks at the report to see whether or not he's going to file charges on it. I am only commissioned with the city at this point, so we do of course have our school out in Bloomsdale. We don't have a lot of issues out there with attendance, but we do get some. So if it gets to the point where we see, and I don't know that I mentioned that I make home visits too, I, I, let me stop and let you know that I do do that. That's just another one of the efforts that we make is, you know, maybe after a phone call, what I'll do is we may have a meeting, or then I may go out to the home and see what's going on at the home, why, you know, the kiddo's not coming to school. So then, back to Bloomsdale, so if we get a kid who is missing a lot of school, you know, I, I can make those home visits, I can make those phone calls, even though I'm not commissioned with county. But if it gets to the point where I see that, you know, charges need to be pursued on this person, then I will get ahold of one of the deputies to go ahead and take over the case. So as far as city, you know, I'm taking everything to Carl, and he's looking it over. Carl's been good about filing on these cases, but the unfortunate thing is, is I know that attendance is not up here on his priority scale, and I know he's one person in an entire county trying to cover all these different cases that are being sent to him. So it does take time. Sometimes it takes months for him to file on it, sometimes it takes six months or more. And again, I'm not trying to bash him by any means, I'm just saying that he, he's very overwhelmed, and it's, I get that it's not priority sometimes, you know, when you have very serious other cases. So in the meantime, while it, you know, while this report's sitting down there and the parents aren't being charged, you know, if you're looking at two months, six months, or whatever the case may be, in the meantime, the kid's still continuing to miss school. And even though I've told the parents that, you know, I've sent something to the prosecutor for them to file charges, they, I guess reality's not hitting them in the face because they're not getting sent anything, they're not hearing anything, just another day's going by, and then next thing you know, this child, I know Ms. Guezler and I, well, Ms. Gag too, we both have two cases recently this year that I had sent down there, and time had went by, and these, I think both the kids were up to 45, 46 days that they had missed this entire school year. And when I sent it down, it was maybe 30s, something like that. So I think that the reason that the city ordinance would be important is because it would give us the right to write that citation out right then and there, and we wouldn't have to wait, you know, three months, six months, nine months, to get something to the parents, to show them, "Hey, this is serious, and your child needs to come to school." There's a lot of other towns that have had the city ordinance in place, and I printed some of those off if you guys want to see them. Park Hills has the city ordinance in place right now. Bonterre, Farmington, and Deluge were just a couple that I had pulled up. And basically what they did was take the state statute and then kind of revised it a little bit. Okay. And then revised it a little bit and made it part of their city ordinance. I don't know if there's anything, did I miss anything? Do you want to give a couple examples?
Yes.
About how many kids are you talking about?
You know, and that's a good question, because honestly, I don't send a lot to the prosecutor, because usually by the time that I make a home visit, or a phone call, or maybe we have a meeting at the school, or the Children's Division's even contacted, a lot of parents, I would say probably 98% of parents are like, "Oh crap, this is, I need to straighten up. This is serious." And it never has to go down there. But then we do have that 2% that just thinks that, "Well, I'm not hurting anybody, I'm not, you know, robbing a store, or robbing a bank, or I'm not," you know, so they don't think it's as serious as some other crimes. So I really don't have to send a lot down there.
You know, I've been married to a school teacher, or I am married to a school teacher, and it's really sad. The kids are the ones that are being affected.
I agree.
And the parents just, they're, they're not parents, okay? They're just, and she's been through this for years and years and years. They're just, you know, and they just, you know, I don't, I hate to see penalizing the kid because what the parents are doing is just terrible thing.
Joe, Joe's got the question.
Well, my question's more for Frank. When this happens, does the violation occur in the city limits at the school, them not showing up, or is the violation at home? Where, I mean-
That's an open question.
Okay.
I don't know the answer. I would suggest that it would take place at the parent's house where they're holding the child.
So this would only affect city children? The ordinance would only affect city limits?
Yeah, then you'd have the violation at the school, city school, and the city home. I think that would give, that would, that would be limited jurisdiction to that.
So, so if the kid's in the county, she really couldn't write it?
We can run those through state. Go ahead and send those down to Carl.
Ken, would our ordinance, I know in a lot of things, city municipal court, you can't do certain things that state court can do. Could, could this ordinance be the same? I guess as far as severe, severe or whatever, can it be as, could our judge write the same kind of thing that Carl could write?
No. The state, the state statute basically says that the court can order the parents, the judge at the circuit court can order the parents to take those kids to school. In municipal court, all we can do is find them, and if they're represented by counsel, possibly place them in jail. But we don't have any injunctive power to order them to do something or stop doing something. Now, what you could do is the judge could make, put the parents on some kind of probation, and as a condition of probation, we'll let you pay a smaller fine if your kids start going to school. That, that would be up to the judge, but that would be a condition of probation, not an order to do something.
Does, does our judge have the power, I guess you would say, to refer to the juvenile officer, or would that have to go through county in order?
They actually do that, they initiate all that.
Okay, so that doesn't have to go through a judge, that's-
Well, no, it doesn't have to, but, you know, the, the state statute says that the juvenile division and the family court division has exclusive jurisdiction over all of that process. And that process involves removing the kids from the home, offering services to the family, and even the cities that have adopted some kind of a municipal version of this, talk about if the parents are found to be not in compliance with this other stuff. So it's sort of parallel. And what she said is that she's not saying she's not going to notify Division of Family Services and get the juvenile people involved in it. And there must be some kind of a finding that somebody, probably a juvenile judge or somebody has found that they have violated the state regulations on attendance. And then, then we could write a, if we adopt our own ordinance, we could write an ordinance charging them at the local level. The involvement of the state agencies and the juvenile division would continue, and it would have to reach a certain level before I think we could write a ticket. We can't just say, "Oops, 15 absences." We're writing a ticket and ignoring the jurisdiction of the juvenile court to find that they've been neglected. There has to be a finding of neglect by somebody in the juvenile court system before even any of these other cities, their ordinance is not triggered unless it's a finding that they violated the state law on the attendance side. And that finding can only be done by a state court. So what we're talking about is if the juvenile court says, "These children are being neglected," then a charge can be requested by Mr. Kinsky, and he would look at it and say, "The parents need to be punished." And I think what you're saying is that if we could do that at the, at the city level, we might have quicker justice, because this is almost, you know, child neglect, and we, we've punished people for neglecting animals. I would say child neglect would be something we normally don't do because it's so serious, but it could be. We've looked at it, we find that the cities that have adopted something like what you found exceed the jurisdiction of a municipal court, in some areas, because we can't order them, can't order the parents to start taking their kid to school. We can only do it in, in a package of probation that Judge Hilscamp would, would impose as, in lieu of paying a fine or in lieu of going to jail. If you'll do A, B, and C, I will put you on probation. He can do that.
So what can we do as a city?
Find them, or put them in jail, and if they want to have an alternative to that, they request it. Hilscamp would have the authority to allow them to be on probation. They violate probation, the remedy is they pay the fine.
Is, is it like other ordinances where every day is another fine?
Yeah. State law says that, I believe, also.
Bob?
I've got to imagine that, you know, you've broken it down, different days for different, you know, high school, six, middle school, eight, and elementary, 10. I would have to think that a bigger portion of these are in one age group or the other. Is that true, or?
I think we dealt a lot, a lot more with middle school and high school, but then we do, I, I think once you start getting towards high school, it almost becomes more the child, a lot of times, refusing to come to school and stuff. And then that's where I get involved and look at remaking that referral to the, sometimes I just make a referral to the juvenile office because the parents are trying everything they can, you know?
That's my case in point, is that once these kids get to a certain age and get more independent, why are we just after the parents and stuff? We need to come down on them equally as hard.
And I do.
Or harder.
Right.
You know, or I can't imagine an elementary school, it seems like having to be more the parents.
Right.
You know, where you get up to the high school level, but-
Well, it is the parents. I mean, they don't, they won't get out of bed to take their kid to school.
Yes.
A lot of times, it's terrible.
You know, roughly, in each of those different grade levels and stuff, you know, how many do you roughly have that's, falls into these categories that are in that party day thing?
I have one in the 40s, but I think I had several, like maybe four to five more that were in the low 20s, but it wasn't to the point to where we thought we needed to file a report, but we had worked with parents throughout the whole year.
But which grades were they in?
Elementary. I'm elementary, eight to five.
We had, at the middle school, we had two-
Excuse me, could you come to the podium?
I'm sorry.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
We had two pretty severe cases, and then we had quite a few that were about to that level. On average, you're looking, most kids in general miss about five days a school year. The ones that have violated our penalty, this semester, probably around 20 went over the seven days, which is a lot. And it's, it's just frustrating sometimes when we don't have a lot to go on. And like Officer Clark said, those extenuating circumstances are taken into account because life happens sometimes. But we know our parents very well, we know our kids very well, and so we spend a lot of time figuring out the why before we move forward in any other avenue, because with those kids, I mean, they're the ones suffering, honestly.
Really?
Yeah.
Seven days, are those unexcused absences, or?
It's any, it's unexcused or excused.
Really?
So if you're looking at a student, and that's a semester, so you're looking at 14 for the course of the year. So the way I view it is in a job, you know, you think about how many vacation days do you get in the course of a school year? And again, extenuating circumstances happen. So we may have a kid with mono, or broke a leg and had surgery, and they, you know, can't come to school. I mean, so there's, there's lots of things, and like I said, that's why we get to know our parents and our kids' situations so well. We just, you know, that's part of our job, so. But there are those few that it's just, it, for some reason, it's not clicking, you know?
And I think that's where we exhaust all our efforts to try to get to know the why, like the home visits, the Children's Division, the meetings, the phone calls, the letters, the, everything that we do, because this is the last thing that I want to do to a parent, you know? But like she said, some, it's just like, we've, we've said this, said this, and said this, and said this. And I know, there was, I think, three years ago, I had a middle school case where a kid, Carl had filed on the mom, and he had missed, I think, 45 days of school by the time he got filed on the case. And so he called me and said, "Hey, you know, I, I've had a talk with mom, we've, you know, done this." He said, you know, "How has his attendance looked since this particular day?" And I looked, and I said, "Well, he hasn't missed a day." And he said, "Well, how are his grades?" And I said, "Well, they're doing relatively well." So then Carl kind of waited a little while, and he said, "Can I call you back and we see, you know, how, how he's doing a little bit later?" And I kept an eye on him, and, and he was doing good. Mom, you know, as soon as mom found out, "Oh my gosh, I've got to start sending my kids to school, or I'm legally going to get into some trouble." She did, she started sending him to school, his grades started improving, and Carl said, "How does the school feel about just dropping this since things have improved?" And I got ahold of district office, and we agreed, that's all we wanted, was for the kid to come to school and get an education. So, you know, we didn't even go forward with anything on that case because the mom did improve, and his grades did get a lot better. I've had other cases where Carl's put them on probation, or he's, the courts have said that they have to take parenting classes, or, you know, some other type of classes or something, and, again, you know, I, it's just exhausting all those efforts to get to that point. It's not that I want to just go out and boom, write someone a citation for not coming to school. But I just, I, and this may sound kind of corny, but I'm going back to school for my masters right now, and so I'm studying a lot of criminal justice classes at the administrative level, and it's just, it seems like, and I'm almost done, but it seems like everything goes back to education, education, education. And so many, so many of these inmates are incarcerated who don't have that education, or they didn't have parents who sent them to school, they didn't have those rules. And I feel like, I'm not saying that we can prevent all the crime in the world here by helping their education, but I think it can help a lot. And I see that a lot in a lot of these classes that I'm taking at that level, so. Yes.
So why are parents sending the kids to schools, and more like Bob said, the kids being the parents?
Sometimes, yeah. This little girl at the elementary level, she's only five. So I mean, you know, she can't really walk to school by herself, you know, so she relies solely on her mom to make that decision for her. We've never got anything that said that she's refusing to come to school, it's just, I mean, mom will say that she's throwing up and she can't drive, that mom herself is throwing up and she can't drive her to school, or she doesn't have the gas money, or she has seizures and she can't watch her walk to the bus stop. Just different things with that child. The one that we have at the middle school level, it's alarm, overslept, 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 overslept. I mean, it's just, I don't even know, there's probably 20 excuses saying, you know, that they, they overslept, or car trouble, or they were out of town. Another case, I'm thinking- Another case I'm thinking of at the middle school, the mom was saying, had a dentist appointment but never brought us an excuse, or decided to take the child to the eye doctor today, you know? Even if the child was at, like, at one point, he may have been at 20 days that semester and we've already told her, "He can't afford to miss anymore." And she'll make an eye appointment for him the next day and then we don't get the excuse for the eye appointment, you know? And we've told her, you know, "I understand he needs to go to the eye doctor, but try to make that after school." Or, you know, "We have Christmas vacation coming up, you know, make it next week during Christmas vacation." It's crazy excuses.
So I know you don't have a number and we're not going to hold you to it.
Okay.
Could you kind of just give us an order of magnitude of what you anticipate you might bring to the municipal court? Is it going to be 10 a school year or 40?
Oh, no, not 40. I would say a school year, I may, I'm just basing what I've done, like referring it down to the prosecutor, I may refer 10 down there. Because like I said, by...
It's going to be under 10 because you couldn't bring them all here.
Correct. Correct. Because like I said, by the time we've done all these other things, a lot of parents are like, "Okay, I better straighten my act up and start sending my child to school." And then it doesn't get to that point. It doesn't have to get to that point.
It's just another tool that you want to use to get somebody's attention to get their kid to school, not to punish them.
Correct.
And I think that's a misconception we're going to have here is people thinking, "Well, we're going to victimize and punish the parents." And it's a form of punishment, but it's to get their attention to get their children to school.
Yes.
Which is all about accountability. And I agree with the fact that if these kids are not in school, what are they doing? What are the chances later on in the teen years that we're going to have a problem child in our community? So it's things where, as a board, we'll need to look at and study and think about, you know? Yes, sir.
What are the chances of getting, you said it's an open question whether you, whether she could write if it's a county kid? You say that's still open or not?
I don't think it's open.
You don't, okay.
I mean, I guess if you had a county kid attending a city school...
That's right. I mean, is a violation happening at school?
Well, there's no case law because it's state, it's mainly enforced at the state level or the county level, so it covers the whole county, it doesn't matter. But a violation has to occur within the city limits of St. Genevieve before we have any jurisdiction.
And you all understand that too? Okay.
So is the violation occurring inside the city?
Well, if you have both prompts, if you have a city resident and attending a city school, we're home free. If you don't have both prompts, that could be questioned.
Well, I mean, it wouldn't just be similar to a county resident not showing up for city court, the viola, I mean, he didn't show up, he's in the county, but he was still charged with contempt of court or whatever for not showing up.
Typically, that's like a contempt of court. The city judge says, "You're in contempt of my court, I ordered you to do this." And once we take initial jurisdiction over a defendant, that would be ongoing.
I was just wondering if that was similar or not.
So if the city addresses an ordinance, you know, to help with this situation, what's going to happen on the county level though? Are we just going to stay mired up in the system now or is there going to be steps?
Well, that's where Carl is stating that the actual incident is, like, you know, our three schools in town. If it's a middle school kid and they live out in Bloomsdale, he is stating that because they go to middle school in town, that that's where the incident occurs. So he's saying the incident occurs in town regardless if they are a county resident or not.
But it wouldn't matter to him because there, it's schools in the county and the students in the county, so it doesn't matter to him.
No, that's what you said.
No.
If the child lives in Bloomsdale but he goes to, they go to middle school in town.
In the city.
Yeah, in the city. Then Carl is saying that it doesn't matter if they live in Bloomsdale in the county, the child is failing to go to school in the city, so it's a city issue. Now, I don't know what's right and what's wrong. I just had these conversations with him for the last four years that I've worked here and everything that, except for Bloomsdale, like if they're not going to school in Bloomsdale and they live in Bloomsdale, then I don't touch those charges because I'm not commissioned in county. You know, I'm, again, I may go out and do home visits and phone calls and meetings and stuff like that, but if it got to that point, that's where I contact a deputy to follow through with the charges since they have the jurisdiction. But Carl has told me for the last four years that if it's a city, if they go to one of our schools in the city, even if they reside in county, that he looks at it like the incident is occurring in the city limits. So I've sent things down to him.
For what it's worth, that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like regardless of where you live, if you violate a traffic law, right? You're responsible for where you violate the traffic law, not where you live.
Yes.
So to me, if the parents are responsible for getting their children to school and their jurisdiction is the city school, well, then that's where the violation is put then on my lawyer.
Right. There has to be a clear definition of that somewhere.
So to answer, that's what I was going to say, to answer your question, if this were to pass, then, you know, if I'm still not, you know, commissioned with county, if this were to pass, then I would, those kids who are going to city school, living in county, if, you know, I would handle it the way I have been going through state. And if it's, they live in city and they're not going to city, then we would use the ordinance.
But what you're saying is, the county prosecutor is saying, if it happens in the city, you should be able to write this ticket and it go through city court.
No, he's not saying...
No, he's not saying that. He's saying...
He's saying the violation occurs in the city.
But he's saying that he could run it through state. That if, that if it, that if the kid, wait, he's saying regardless if I'm commissioned in the county or not, that the incident happens in the city, so I can still go ahead and send it to him because I am commissioned in the city.
And I'm only talking about grayness and I'm not, there's no case law that says that when you refuse, when you neglect your children out in the county by not sending them to a city school, that you can be charged in municipal court. That's gray. But if both the parents live here and the school is here, that's not gray. That's right.
So, but I guess we ought to try to clarify between you and the judge and the school, if she can write that ticket and charge them in municipal court, why wouldn't we?
Well, what would happen actually is she'd write a citation that has to be basically signed by the city prosecutor or the county prosecutor, whether or not this report warrants an actual prosecution. It's not like a speeding ticket that occurred in front of you. If you follow what I'm saying. And furthermore, this is just something, it's not, it's a different viewpoint, the length of time that it takes for these folks to be able to even refer the matter to a city prosecutor or a county prosecutor is referring it to Division Family Services, referring it to juvenile, we probably guess that they're overloaded too. And they may have what they consider to be more serious things going on in terms of neglect or abuse than, eh, they're not going to school, eh, you know? And there's sub-issues like homeschooling, things like that, somebody has to look at. And then the whole process of the school having an attendance policy that has some humanity in it, you guys have already looked at medical, special circumstances, families that are in crisis, families that are divorcing, fighting over where the child is living. There's a lot of social policy going on at your level. And then when you say this thing is gone this far enough, it needs to be referred out, then it rises to another level of whether the parents should be prosecuted.
Well, we keep, I mean, I've mentioned, heard the term city schools. We pay for the schools through our county taxes, so calling it a city school is not appropriate, right?
No, it's located within the city limits of city.
But is it like the courthouse where...
Well, it's not a city, it's not a city school, it's a city, it's so located in your city limits.
But do we have, so we still have jurisdiction for those grounds unlike...
Sure. They write, they make charges against city offenses that occur in the schools. Our city...
Well, I meant like, isn't like the courthouse that's handled by county only, we don't really, so there is a difference there. I mean, it's not, I don't know how to put that into words.
I hate to muddy this anymore than it already is, but there are some offenses that are enforceable on either side. So if my identity is stolen by somebody in Florida, but I live in St. Genevieve, the St. Genevieve Police Department can take the report for the identity theft. So anywhere that the crime occurs could potentially take the report and submit the charges. You know, obviously, there's no case law on this. That doesn't mean that it can't happen. It doesn't mean that we can't establish good case law in that regard. I don't think that the school's intent here is to write everybody that goes to St. Genevieve school with this. They've said, they've stated that they're going to limit this to the residents of St. Genevieve and that they're still going to refer the other ones to Carl. I think it's real similar to our other nuisance ordinances that, you know, the whole spirit of the ordinance is to generate compliance. And if they're able to, after they've satisfied all of the requirements that they've already gone through with the other state agencies, to issue the ticket and keep the kid from missing another 20 days or 30 days while they're waiting for the charge to be issued through the county. You know, I certainly applaud the school. I think that they've done a fantastic job of researching this and I know this is something they've been trying to get before this board for a couple of years and have tripped over some stumbling blocks along the way. So I certainly believe that they're going to take the discretion, all the discretion necessary to not abuse this ordinance. I think it's just an effort to speed this process along and get the child the education that they need and bring the parents, make the parents aware that this is a problem, so.
But my point is, pretty much, I think what you're saying is, if we're trying to help the school speed up this process and you've got many more kids going to the schools here, especially the middle school and the high school, that are probably from the county than from the city, we ought to try writing, even though they live in the county, we ought to charge them in the city to try to speed that process up, whether it's gray or not.
I think we could make that good say, argument. I think we were going to do that.
I don't know that we, I don't think that's, it's not clear to me from what maybe Frank's saying here.
We could probably talk about this all night long. We had a very good presentation here. I think we need to have a work session on this, get the proper people at a meeting so we can come to some agreement here and move forward and not take a lot of time to do it because in August, we're going to be starting schools. So this needs to be, if we're going to do this, it needs to be in place and done in a timely manner. I would like to say by at least the third week of July, the end of July, we should have a decision by this board, what we're going to do and what we feel comfortable doing and how we should do it. Rick?
I think we're all behind you on this, okay? At least I feel we are. And yeah, I would like to see something done with this.
Thank you.
Yeah, start moving on this, okay?
Thank you.
And we will. Bob?
But we got these other communities, maybe we could do a little survey with them and see how they've handled some of their issues.
And that's like a point by Chris. Yeah, because I know the other SROs, like at Central and Farmington. North County doesn't have one, but Farmington and Central, for instance, I'm pretty good friends with them and I know that, you know, they use this when they have to. And they say it's been very effective because you don't have to wait for something to go through state for a while. Because then, again, in the meantime, you have the kids just continuing to miss and miss. And this guy, the assistant principal at the elementary, one that I had sent down to the prosecutor, I guess maybe a month and a half ago, the girl was continuing to miss and she said, "Now she's at 41." And I said, "I don't know what else to do because we've exhausted all of our efforts. I've sent something down and all we can wait is on the legal end of it." Whereas I think, and it's not going to be effective for all parents, I get that, but I think if maybe we would have been able to write that citation out, you know, as soon as it got to that point, then that child may not have been getting up to, I don't know what she ended up with, but...
It was 42 or 43, I know.
So, but it's been...
Just elementary?
Yes. So it's been effective with, I know Farmington and with Central, them using it. And that's what I was telling Chief, I think that when they write it, they write it like a traffic ticket and just write it. I could be wrong, but I believe that's how they do it, the way they've explained it to me, so.
You're going to attend anything we do, right, Christie? Now, maybe you could have some more input from those other SROs that bring...
Okay, sure.
Sounds like a good idea.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Tiffany Holman here.
Hello.
Tiffany, how are you?
Fine, how are you? Today, I would like to propose that we turn the intersection of Roberts and Memorial into a four-way stop instead of a two-way. Going from North Fourth, you can drive all the way to La Porte and people are exceeding the speed limits all the time. We have children playing in the neighborhood, riding bikes, and I really think that'd be a good spot to turn it. We have, since I've lived there two and a half years, I've seen probably a handful of times, if you're in the area of VFW coming down the hill, there's children on bicycles and scooters that do not stop. I just believe it's going to be an accident soon.
How are the streets posted there? Is there plenty of speed limit signs? Is there plenty of...
I don't know that there is on that street.
I was, had it in my mind, go out and check that, look at that, I failed.
There's also a little, if you're on La Porte, heading to North Fourth, it's a small hill, which if you're on Memorial, it doesn't give you very much visibility.
Yeah, it's kind of blindish.
It is, especially if there's cars parked along the houses there.
And there are a lot of children.
There are. And the summer months and when there's events of the VFW, there's constant traffic going all, and they don't stop or slow down.
Eric?
There aren't really a tremendous number of speed limit signs in the city. Speed limit is 20 miles an hour unless posted otherwise, and that's on our city limit signs. So, you know, with the exception of 61 or Rogers Street or progress Parkway, everything's 20 miles an hour anyways. Market Street goes up, it's a 30. So I've not done any study on this yet, but I'll certainly have the guys watch and see, see what's appropriate there.
Apparently Tiffany has done quite a bit of study on it.
Well, we live on that corner.
Lives on that corner. And there is, and I, Bob, there's a lot of kids that live there.
I don't see where it would be, Interpol, there's most stops on there, so.
So we've done four-way stop, added stop signs before on a trial basis, is that still allowed or...
Under our code it is, yes.
Now, it requires an ordinance change for it to be enforceable.
Correct.
And you'd have to change your ordinance back if you wanted to undo it. So we prepare an ordinance for it, between now and the next meeting, investigate, then you can consider the ordinance either to pass it or not pass it. Give you more information later, next time.
Bob?
We did do that on Leahy, just for that reason.
Yeah. That spot, there's a lot of kids.
There's lots of kids on Leahy too. And that, the streets intersect, so there's kids.
Right, yeah. Rick, you have something?
I just want to tell Tiffany that 52 years ago, I had a bicycle wreck right there, ran to the back of the dumpster.
Yeah, the kids, they...
Ran a stop sign.
They don't...
But Rick's failed.
And that's, even if they try to stop, the cross-traffic doesn't. And I mean, most of them, I don't see them slowing down very often coming down that hill. Like, they're kids, "Ooh, this is fun, a big hill, I can just fly," and that's what they do. And I'm terrified that there's going to be a collision soon.
You don't want to be the first one there.
I would be because I'm on that corner. I don't want to see that.
Charles?
Another thing that I think a lot of times parents need to get across to their kids, if they're on the streets on bikes, they're subject to the same law... if they're on the streets on bikes, they're subject to the same laws, traffic laws, that a car is. If there's a stop sign there and you're on a bike, you have to stop at the stop sign. You can't just fly through the intersection. And I see it all the time where they think, "Well, I'm just a kid on a bike, I don't have to follow the rules." So we need to make sure that the...
Rick did that.
They all write.
Yeah, and I don't know who these children are, I just see them coming down the hill and...
But you're a concerned parent, so that's, that's good.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of time, unfortunately.
We'll do that, parent ordinance, and that the next meeting will put it before this board. I think it's a no-brainer, but it's hard, so. Thank you for your concern, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure. You're going to miss an exciting report, the city administrator. Thanks again for everybody coming to do it, I appreciate input.
We prepared an ordinance to revise the abandoned property. The model we used, though, was a little dated, so the city attorney expressed concerns that there may have been some updates since then. So we've contacted Missouri Municipal League to see if there have been any updates. Okay, good. He's got it prepared and it'll be presented at your next meeting. The mayor, Alderman Prince, and I met with Paul Arnold from the Special Road District and Brian Okenfuss with the, with MODOT at the intersection of Chadwell and the highway. And Alderman Donovan was there as well. Paul is talking to an engineer about doing some plans that may be less than a full set of engineered drawings that the MODOT representative said, depending on its level of detail, may be acceptable to him. So we don't have to spend $20,000 to get it designed. And he and I, Paul and I, are going to meet to get that information together and get it into Okenfuss's hands. And then we'll come back with a proposal if they, when they say what they have is sufficient for us to proceed. There's some discussion of a declaration of a disaster in the state for the flooding that occurred. And so we were asked to submit our damage claims to be part of the county's claim. You have to meet two thresholds. One is the county has to meet a certain dollar threshold and the statewide has to meet a threshold. And then the governor can request the president to make a declaration. And ours was basically cleanup work. I mean, we didn't really have any damage. And we opened the, closed the gates and opened the gates and cleaned up the road from the mud that got on it when the creeks jumped out of the bank. So our amount was relatively small, but we made our contribution. At the park board meeting Monday night, there was some discussion about, a while back, then mayor Grimminger had an idea that the county's tearing down the nursing home, maybe they could leave this kind of large dining room areas and open pavilion. We approached the county, they looked at it, they had their contractor look at it, and it's just not feasible to do that. That building wasn't designed to stand on its own. But it stimulated some conversations about additional pavilions. And the park board was curious about having music at the park and the possibility of constructing a band show. So... Okay. Mr. Donzie was there, not Jim, his brother, who does the sound work and I can't remember his first name.
Dwayne.
Dwayne. And he had brought pictures of what Perryville had done, and so they're kind of kicking that around. The, Steve Hoog, who's with the disc golf people, was there and reported that they've redone the layout on the nine disc golf holes we had, and they built new tee boxes and they've done landscaping. And he thinks that they've made some improvement. We've got six people that show up there regularly on a Monday nights to play. We've got four or five more that have expressed interest. So he thinks the interest is picking up and he's still trying to get contributions to upgrade the equipment. The baskets aren't up to standards. They asked about providing water to the dog park. We can get a self-closing hydrant for about $80. And so they're, asked Gary to look into purchasing that for installation at the dog park so there's some water for the people who participate and use that facility. Finally, they're planning on putting a covered picnic table on the main street park. Gary says that the materials are in, it's kind of work they'll do if it rains. I mean, it's just, we'll get it done, but it's got to be fill-in work to get that done this time of year. The, attended the meetings at Timo Regional Planning. Most noteworthy, as Chauncey Buckhite announced, his intended retirement in January of 2018. He's a great resource, I mean, and he will be, his service will be missed. Hopefully, they'll find someone equally as competent. But they won't find anybody with his institutional memory. You know, I mean, it's just amazing, you know? Go back, "Back in 2003, oh yeah, I remember that." "You did four of those and six of those and 10 of these," so, okay. That'll be missed.
Excuse me, ma'am, Chauncey could maybe be a consultant for us then, if we had any issues.
No, good point.
I'm sure he'd be happy to do that.
I have not talked to him about his post-retirement plans, maybe he would. And also while at that meeting, we received a... Communication from the Federal Highway Administration. Apparently, there's a public law that requires cities and counties where they have sidewalks to make sure they're in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. They aren't saying we're going to have to fund replacing all of the ramps throughout the city. But anytime you do work adjacent to one of those, you're supposed to bring it into compliance. And they want us to produce a plan, identify where they are, what streets will be affected, and how they would be changed. So, you know, that's the kind of thing, it's better, easier just to comply than it is to resist. So we'll probably be putting that plan together for submission. And then when we do work, we can make those improvements.
Little sidebar here. We talked about construction of a pavilion and Buckway talked, you know, we've talked about this a long time up in the park. You know, we had talked about the band going up there and playing up there. Did we set some money aside for that at one time? I think we were going to, or the...
We were going to, but then I don't think we ever did. Well, there's quite a bit of money now, isn't there?
In the band?
In the band fund or not? I mean, in reserve?
Band's got $50,000 in a CD.
Right.
That they never touched.
Right. But I don't know, that'd be, that wouldn't be enough, probably, I don't know.
Depends on what you do, I guess.
The whole conversation started too with them, whereas at a park board meeting, they were thinking that maybe the band could, instead of, they always played out in the desert, maybe they could play some concerts up there. Well, that's a great idea, but you know, you have to have the facility. And the reason that we talked about that was because at Riverview, where that parking lot is, it's handicap accessible and it'd be a great spot. Instead of just making it a parking lot, maybe we could do something like that. And it's just the, they just had a vision to throw out there. So I had Dwayne from the band come up, because I can't answer those questions. And he did send me a picture of a band pavilion in Perryville.
It's kind of a Cadillac.
It's a Cadillac, yes, but it's fairly nice and, you know, it's just, it's just, it's a dream right now, is what it is, so.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. We have our staff reports. Steve?
Good evening everyone, this is Steve. You'll notice in the past few of my reports, I've mentioned the Robert Gas Wastewater Plant. Inspection delivery was May 22nd. It was delivered about 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock in the morning on May 22nd. They've been working on the installation all week. Installation of that unit should be complete tomorrow. As long as it runs out, everything, and everything's fine with it, we'll be able to return the 6-inch pump that we've rented to supplement oxygen and mixing in the ditch. We did have a water leak up on Ridgeway Drive. It was a 4-inch cast iron line, pretty, problem, it was a transite line. Problem with that line was, it was where a previous repair was and the whole thing was encased in concrete. So we actually had to make a very large patch for a small leak. The street department's aware of it and they're going to repair the asphalt as soon as possible. Other than that, everything's going good. Any questions?
Does that, who takes care of any street work immediately done, is our street?
Yes.
The one on 9th Street's getting pretty rough. You know where you guys did the Hertzog Lane thing?
Yeah, Gary's aware of that one, the one at the entrance of the park and Ridgeway.
Some of you might know what the Hertzog Lane thing was, but there's an old stainless steel pipe that was privately owned on Hertzog Lane, serving those customers. It was in very bad shape, it would break with great regularity. We decided a while back that we should replace that, the city should replace that. And we got usements from the property owners in order to do that, and they just now completed that construction. But we're, it was the city's, even though it was privately owned line, when it broke, it was our water, it was dumping out into the street, so we always had to go fix it anyway. This way, we'll be out, we'll be money ahead by not having to go up there and try and fix that pipe all the time.
You got an idea what kind of money that we had to put out to fix all of, I mean, to put the new line in?
To replace the existing line on Hertzog?
Approximately.
Maybe $1,000.
That's everything? You're talking about just the materials or that labor too?
Just materials.
Was it took you about two or three days?
Yeah, yeah. Two guys, three days, three guys, Sunday.
Eric?
Any idea, I know we talked a little bit at the last meeting about people with backups. Any idea we ain't further on how many we might be looking at to try to accommodate?
No, not at this time. And I actually ran into a customer down on Beane Seraphin. They expressed that they use plugs in their floor drains and they haven't had problems in years.
Buck, I get that, but you don't...
As far as...
I mean, as a resident, you don't expect that you should have to plug your floor drains. And I know we, you know, we got a problem. It's an inherent problem in the city.
Since the last meeting, nobody's came forward either.
That's a question I would have, anybody come forward. That was public knowledge now, so.
And I had put it out too on my little Facebook meeting report thing to contact City Hall if you were having that kind of problem, so.
Till we get that, maybe we... Thank you. Anybody else?
Steve, on the sewer manholes and stuff we talked some time ago about, some of those are, you know, this far down below the pavement, so. What are your plans?
The guys have went around and traveled the roads and they've measured the ones that seem to be excessive. Depending on what material the manhole's made out of, they're either going to have to pull the frame off and add either bricks underneath it and regrout it in. Some of the larger ones, they might be able to use concrete riser rings. They've compiled a list of ones in the street and we're going to be working towards that this fall.
This one at Knight and Ridgeway is huge.
That one's actually been ordered, so.
I think, didn't they put asphalt, excuse me, didn't they put asphalt on that one on 4th Street there?
About the skate park, yeah.
I was thinking, that helped a lot, that was a bad one.
I also got a letter of compliance from DNR for asphalt levels.
Yeah, that was part of the, our inspection at our wastewater facility. The inspection was done the first week of May earlier this month. I was going to report that next month, but since you brought it up, I'll let you know. Both the plant and the treatment was both in compliance. The only recommendation we had was, they'd like to see a response plan for SSOs, so.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks.
Eric?
Good evening again. I don't have terribly much to report. You've got my report there. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I do have an ordinance on the agenda for later entering into the agreement with the Homeland Security Initiative that we discussed at the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago. It doesn't specifically address any of the federal forfeiture. However, our understanding is from all the other agencies, and I'm going to contact them and try to clear that up some. But the immediate benefit to us is just the partnership with them and the availability of utilizing some of their resources for any investigations that we have here that meet their requirements. We've already developed a really good working relationship with them and we have, you know, a good rapport with them. So the initial agreement will, I believe, cover or allow us to enter into the agreement with them and start the overtime projects for the partnership with their agency and the overtime reimbursement. But again, it will, my understanding, and I will clarify that and get the documentation that we need, will open us up to the availability of the federal forfeitures for any investigations in which we help, so. Does anybody have any questions specifically?
Not a question and stuff, but I was coming down Maple Drive the other day and I seen the particular male lady that was attacked by a dog earlier. It just happened out of the corner of my eye, seeing her leap back and a dog jump. You know, fortunately, the dog was behind a glass door. It was one of the particular mailboxes that she has to scan. While I was there, I hit the brakes, I, you know, didn't open the glass door, was there just seeing her jump and the dog. And she had mentioned to me another situation at the corner of Ridgeway and Virginia. Yellow house on the corner, I don't want to go past there, this dog is tied up outside, it goes nuts. I mean, just simply barking, yelping, lunging. I guess something probably needs to be checked.
Okay. I think that my guys are familiar with that and have been addressing it, but I'll look into it to make sure.
Thank you.
Eric?
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
You have my report in front of you and the additional sheet that I handed out is just our pretty graph that shows month by month, the highs and lows of our attendance tallies taken at the Welcome Center. So you can see that even with some highs and lows with whatever during the various months, we're at about even where we usually are, maybe 1% ahead. I wouldn't be surprised if May falls behind just because of all the weather issues. I think there were 10 days when one or the other or most of our roads in and out of St. Genevieve were closed. So on the report, I just want to draw your attention to a couple of things. Halfway down the sheet there, you see spring advertising. This is something that takes a considerable amount of effort and it does get St. Genevieve's name out there. We coordinated blocks of St. Genevieve Destination and Events ads in the St. Louis Post-Dispatch, the Bellevue News-Democrat, Webster-Kirkwood Times, South County Times, and most recently Riverfront Times, Missouri Life Magazine, Show Me Missouri Magazine, and newspapers in Fairview Heights and Scott Air Force Base in Illinois. Just in case anybody asks you, that's kind of our outreach area. Of course, social media and all that kind of thing too. During the Tourism Advisory Council meeting earlier, one of the main things that I wanted to make sure that every alderman and our businesses are aware of is that this is the time of year when businesses need to renew their listing on the Visit Mo website, which puts them into the 2018 Missouri Vacation Guide. And so we have... And so we have instructions for that. We send out reminders, but I'm making sure that at all the meetings that I attend, I'm mentioning this. If anyone has any questions about that process or they need help with that process, they're always welcome to contact us at the Welcome Center in 837097. Those are due by June 2nd, or they won't be in the Vacation Guide next year. You have my eclipse update there. I think since the last meeting that I reported at, our, we had already had our Facebook page up and now our full-blown website is up and available. And we're reserving spaces for people to view the eclipse at our event. We're spreading information about the music festival on Sunday. And since I put this report together on Monday night this week, Martin and the mayor had asked me to get in touch with the park board and talk to them about, you know, the eclipse events and how things are happening. And so I did and we went through everything and they're kind of considering their options for what they might like to suggest up there. It sounds like they're probably leaning more towards providing additional camping spaces and so they're kind of looking at all the, you know, possibilities surrounding that, just primitive camping, no facilities other than obviously restrooms and porta potties. And right next door, we also have the Fair Board that is, they've recently contacted me. I'd met with them a month or two ago and they are adding inventory to our online booking capability to add RV campsites and also more tent camping campsites. So as you know, all of our lodging is sold out in the Bed and Breakfast and the hotels. And so we're probably going to be able to add 250-ish RV camping capabilities throughout these various areas. I've also recently been contacted by the Elks Lodge and they have quite a bit of space out there for parking or other accommodations we might need. You can see more about this on the Facebook page for the St. Genevieve Solar Eclipse and the website. We also have a link directly on the Visit St. Jen website, so all of the advertising that we're doing is driving people to that website and the social media. And then you have resolutions before you tonight to reappoint the chairperson of the Tourism Tax Commission, Tom Hooper, and Kelly Fowler and Sarah Menard on the Tourism Advisory Council. So there's my report.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any committee reports? I have one, one committee report. I got a nice email from Jack Tanning. He's Executive Secretary of the Memorial Cemetery. And he states, he says, "Mayor Hassler, please convey our thanks and compliments to the city work crew for the way in which they are maintaining memorial cemetery grounds. Since they have taken over this responsibility, the cemetery has looked better than it has in a long time." He said, "Our cemetery committee wanted to also make you and the Board of Alderman aware that we have been in contact with the Monument Restoration Company to start the next phase in our cemetery restoration plan." Jack Tanning. So, good job, Eric. Looks great. Please, thank you.
For the reference.
Yes, you may. In front of y'all, there's the minutes from the May 11th meeting, closed session on May 11th. And we also have a treasurer's report in there. Motion to approve the minutes is.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. That takes us to our resol, did you have something to hand?
So that was for the regular meeting, so we need to close minute approval and then we also need to approve all the treasurer's report.
Okay. We're going to hand those out to you for the closed meeting. Motion to approve? Second. Any in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And the treasurer's report? Move approval. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. That brings us to some, a resolution, 2017-15, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force and the St. Genevieve Police Department.
Yeah, I would like to, to consider that the resolution authorized the mayor and the chief of police to negotiate the agreement, fill in all the blanks and bring it back to you for an ordinance. Normally, because I, I can't tell from looking at the blanks whether or not there might be some financial responsibilities on the city. I understand the policy and I understand that you folks are probably inclined to approve such an agreement, but you can't hardly vote on it with so many blanks in it. So what you're really authorizing is for the mayor and the chief to fill those blanks in, bring it back to you. If they were all filled in, you could probably adopt it with a resolution, but I don't think you can adopt it with so many blanks.
So, motion to approve?
The negotiation.
The negotiation.
I mean, chief, is that something that you and the mayor could get done? I mean, you're not going to change the terms of the fine.
Why, why are we making a motion to negotiate? Why don't we just table this for just?
Well, I mean, that could be the mayor's prerogative. You can't hardly adopt it with so many blanks.
Who could table it?
Well, I mean, if I could.
Go ahead. Come on up.
On, on some of the blanks, these are the forms. I just forwarded the entire email. These will be forms that we will be submitting monthly for the reimbursement on the thing. So I, there's some of these that we cannot complete, it's just the forms that we will be submitting to OSADAS to request the reimbursement. So, I mean, the expenses are spelled out in the agreement itself as far as our, our responsibility for the maintenance on the vehicles, things of that nature. So other than the paying the overtime out initially, which we are going to get reimbursed for, I don't know that there's any permanent expense other than the maintenance on the vehicles.
Well, even if you are authorizing the expenditure of this overtime, that's going to be obligated because of this agreement, I, I think that is a financial obligation and those normally have to be approved by ordinances.
So how do you, how do you bring it back in that ordinance if you don't know the amounts that they're going to be?
Well, what I'm saying is the, the police department's budget is going to have some extra movement in it, even if it's temporary. I don't know, you're going to get paid back each monthly cycle.
Correct.
So I think we, the ordinance should say that the police department and the chief has the authority to do that under the, you know, the supervision of the city administrator. It's just money, but that, the money things are the ones that are supposed to be, you won't have a hard number.
Correct.
You don't, you don't know how many hours you're going to commit to it. But they actually have to work overtime and we have to pay it and then you're going to get reimbursed for the overtime piece.
Correct.
So what language specifically needs to be changed?
I, I don't know. That policy? Rather than say, when you say sign the agreement, I, I think that, well, for one thing, Homeland Security deals with all kinds of different agencies and have all, have all kinds of different flexibility on, on handling their own money. Our city basically follows a budget and you're going to have to have some flex in your budget in order to accomplish this agreement. I, I would think that between you and Martin can figure out to describe to the Board of Alderman, maybe not to exceed, for instance, that we won't, will not exceed a certain dollar amount of overtime paid out without coming back to the Board of Alderman.
Alright.
Excuse me, is that, is that going to be like more of a game time decision though on that kind of thing? It's not going to be like, you're going to know a month in advance how much they're planning on using you?
Correct. I mean. Yeah, what you'd be doing is giving them some, some flex, up to a certain amount. If he says, "I, I need a thousand hours of overtime," you're going to go, "What?"
Well, the Board doesn't approve overtime. I bet.
We budget.
We budget, that's right. So the question is at the, at any given point, is this demanding that we exceed our budget? And I'd argue that if that's the case, we, we would have to come back to the Board. But, but within the confines of the approved budget, it doesn't require any extraordinary approval by the Board.
It would, but in order to launch the program and move on it, I think you're going to have to have some budget discretion that this Board would approve without, I mean, it would be sort of after the fact.
I mean, I think with, and again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to grasp, we have budgetary discretion on overtime anyways.
Until you, or unless you exceed your overtime budget.
There's no overtime. At the point you exceed your personnel budget, you would be constrained from incurring not only any overtime, but any regular time.
Correct.
So we have to come back for a budget amendment at that time.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get direction as far as what, what number I need to put down or.
Well, I don't think we're going to have a number, but I think.
I think not to exceed.
I mean, there, there would be okay.
Okay.
There are dollar amounts set forth in the agreement itself as far as not exceeding $25,000 per employee or something to that effect, which obviously we're not going to come anywhere near that.
We'll revise the ordinance to include some of it.
Yes.
So, motion to table or what do we, what do we need to do with this? Do I die or?
No, you don't want it to die.
Just table it.
Just table it and they'll come back with some description for you on how they're going to administer these funds and keep track of it.
Motion to table? Second.
Until the next meeting.
Until the next meeting.
Until the next meeting. Yeah, sorry. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Eric.
I, I don't know any more than I did when I came up here, so, well.
Neither do I. We'll get it straightened out though and get it pushed forward. Force is out. Resolution 2017-16, this is a resolution reappointing Thomas Hooper to the State Genevieve Tourism Tax Commission. Should we approve it? Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Resolution 2017-17, a resolution reappointing Kelly Fowler to the St. Genevieve Tourism Advisory Council. Should we approve? Go ahead. Motion to approve? Second. All in favor? Aye. Resolution 2017-18, a resolution reappointing Sarah Menard to the St. Genevieve Tourism Advisory Council. Should we approve? Second. All in favor? Aye. Resolution 2017-19, a resolution appointing Gary Smith to the St. Genevieve Community Access Cable Board. Move to approve? Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Then we have an ordinance, you know, first reading of this ordinance. An ordinance amending Chapter 110, the Mayor and the Board of Alderman, Article 2, Board of Alderman Meetings, Section 110-170, dates for meetings of the Board of Alderman of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code. We're going to adjust this meeting from, take it from 5:30, we're going to start our meeting at 6 o'clock. Motion to approve? Second. All in favor? Aye. We'll have a second reading on. Like a motion for a second reading? Second.
It's really not one of the time-sensitive issues. We have to hold on to that.
Got a motion in the second? Got a motion in the second?
Go ahead.
A roll call?
Who was the motion in the second? I missed it. Johnny and.
My motion. Voice, all in favor? Aye. Motion carried. So our next meeting will be at 6 o'clock?
We have to do a second reading now.
Oh, the second reading now, okay. That was the first, alright. Read it again? An ordinance amending Chapter 110, Mayor, Board of Alderman, Article 2, Board of Alderman Meetings, Section 110-170, dates for meetings of the Board of Alderman of the St. Genevieve Municipal Court Code. Bid to change our meeting?
Motion?
Second. Now we need a roll call.
Alderman Grimminter?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Nerzika?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4158 now becomes ordinance 4094.
Thank you very much. Man, I blew by old business and new business.
It's alright.
Okay.
I got the old business.
So we have other business. Temporary liquor license, all before you. St. Genevieve Lions Club is requesting a temporary liquor license for the Jordan Flatt, Saturday, April, August, Saturday, August the 12th, Sunday, August the 13th, and Sunday, August the 20th for the Solar Eclipse, Eclipse event. Both events will be held at the Lions Club Park. Motion to approve? Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. And we also have a temporary liquor license for the St. Genevieve Knights of Columbus. Council Number 1037 is requesting a temporary liquor license for Jordan Flatt, Saturday, August the 12th and Sunday, the 13th at 59 South Main Street. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Board of Alderman Communications? Anybody got anything to communicate? I think I got to communicate, that June 8th meeting, I will not be here. Joe will be in my place. I'm going to the Municipal League, I'm going to go to some training, which happens to fall on June the 8th, Thursday, the 8th, I'll be gone that day and Friday, so.
And I will be there also, I'll be in, I'll see you on the age.
Is it okay with you, Buck?
Yes, it is.
Good, good deal.
Thanks, Ray.
I'd like to have a motion to go into closed session. Can I do that?
To discuss.
To discuss, not litigation, personnel.
Someone, someone.
Alderman Grimminter?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Nerzika?
Yes.
Motion carries.